Good evening, everybody. We're going to start the meeting right now. We're going to call the meeting to order at 6:34 PM, October 20th, only a number of days before that wonderful Halloween. I want to remind everyone that per city's rules for decorum, all speakers, members of the audience and council members are to conduct themselves with decorum and to not engage in conduct that interrupts the orderly conduct of the city council meeting. Also, public comment through Zoom may be accepted for the agenda items listed within the consent calendar, public hearing and discussion calendar sections of the agenda. General public comments will be accepted at the meeting by those physically in attendance at the appropriate time. Also, we did have a closed session. Attorney side, do we have any reporting out on the closed session?
No, Mr. Mayor and Council, audience, a direction was given to staff and no reportable action was taken.
Very good. Thank you very much. We will do the pledge of allegiance. We are very fortunate tonight to have three members, Soto Leonard, Ethan Dillon, and Maxwell Haddad. Did I do that right, guys? If you could come on up, you're going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight. That would be, we will do with Ethan Dillon, please. Could I all stand?
What's going on, young Marines? Haddad, how are you? Good, good. Soto, how are you? Dillon, nice to meet you. Slide on over a little bit more. Okay, keep on sliding over, Marines. There you go, young Marines. Young Marines, America's future right here. This is America's future. It's always an honor to see future of fighting force here. Yeah, Marine Corps just celebrated his 250th birthday. Bruh, is that true? Awesome, awesome. Before we get there, I want to make sure each and every single one of you, because that's a lot of dedication you guys putting in now, right? I'd like to know how old you are, what grade you're in, right? And what do you want to do when you finish high school?
I'm 12 years old. I'm in the seventh grade. Once I finish high school, I'm going to go to the, I'm going to go to college, join the Marine Corps as an officer.
ROTC.
Yes, sir.
Outstanding, outstanding, double O.
My name is Leonard and I'm in fifth grade. Well, once I, once I move on from high school, I maybe want to go to college and maybe become a pilot. I'm thinking one of the commercials.
I'm 10 years old. I'm in fifth grade. And when I, after college, I mean, high school, after high school, I want to be an artist.
I need to call Cash if I'll get to call me Cash for short. I'm in the Army Reserves, Lieutenant Colonel, and it's your city councilman here. You all three, you live in Laverne or close by? Where? You live in Laverne. What about you? You live close by? Azusa, hey, Canyon State, love it. Talk to me. I've done Temple City. Hey, we're thankful that you guys are here. What's up today? With that, okay.
I just, real quick, Ethan, you're the one that sent the letter, is that correct? Okay, Ethan sent a letter to us at the city for myself to put the proclamation regarding their, a group called the Young Marines, and basically teaching the importance of self-confidence, academic achievement, honoring our veterans, good citizenship, community service, and living a healthy drug-free lifestyle. He sent the letter, we did the proclamation, so we're very proud of all of you for doing this. It's very important. So I'll read the proclamation, kind of explains what, what we've got here. So proclamation, whereas the health and well-being of our community's youth are paramount important, and whereas drug abuse continues to be a significant concern that affects individuals and families across our nation, and whereas Red Ribbon Week encourages individuals and organizations to take a stand against drug abuse by promoting drug-free lifestyles and providing educational programs and resources to our youth, and whereas the Young Marines strengthens the lives of America's youth by teaching the importance of self-confidence, academic achievement, honoring our veterans, good citizenship, community service, and living a healthy and drug-free lifestyle. We have proclaimed to the City of Laverne that the week of October 23rd to the 31st, recognize as Red Ribbon Week, and we encourage all citizens, schools, businesses, and community organizations participate in activities and programs aimed at promoting drug-free living and creating a stronger, healthier future for our youth. We did this 20th day of October 2025. Thank you very much.
City of Laverne certificate recognition presented to Soto Leonard. This certificate is presented on behalf of the Laverne City Council to Southland Young Marine Soto Leonard with sincere gratitude and appreciation for your dedicated service here to our country and our community. And Godspeed. I'll recognize each and every single one of them, because it's really important to me. Why is it important to me? Because I guarantee you, there are not many young men or women out there that put this uniform on this early in stage in life dedicated to community service. And that means a lot to me, because I know that dedication. All right. City of Laverne, certificate recognition presented, Ethan Dillon. This certificate is presented on behalf of the Laverne City Council, Southland Young Marine Ethan Dillon with sincere gratitude and appreciation for your dedicated service to our country and our community. Ethan? All right, Maxwell Haddad, City of Laverne, certificate recognition presented to Maxwell Haddad. This certificate is presented on behalf of the Laverne City Council to Southland Young Marine Maxwell Haddad with sincere gratitude and appreciation for your dedicated service to our country and community. Haddad, thank you.
Young Marines, don't smile. Poor face, poor face. Thank you guys very much. Thank you. All right. All right, Marines, you're going to take seat.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Crosby.
President.
Councilmember Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Lau. Mayor Protem Casapaguita.
Present.
And Mayor Hepburn.
Present.
All present, sir.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we have three presentations. First is the Inland Valley Humane Society President and CEO Nicole Bressiani will provide an annual overview of the Inland Valley Humane Society IVHS activities, including events in Laverne, key statistics on rescues and adoptions, and notable developments. Evening, Nicole, how are you?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, city staff, community members. Thank you for having me tonight. I'll try not to break your.
It's been done before.
Can't promise anything. Well, then I can't blame you, JR. See if I can make it happen. All right. So Inland Valley Humane Society has been partnering with the City of Laverne since 1951. You were one of our four original partners, and we appreciate you, so thank you. So I was here earlier at the beginning of this year, talking about all the good things we do, but we kicked off January 2025 with launching our Good Mobile, named after Dr. Harvey Good, 42-year board member, member, a former professor, Professor Meritas at ULV, and also a resident at Hillcrest. So what we didn't know when we were booking the Good Mobile at our inaugural event is that all of the Hillcrest residents were required to have their pets spayed or neutered. So yay for them, because they're responsible, but we were unable to do spay and neuter. So we did a free vaccine clinic for people. So that worked out. It was a really good, really good launch. And I don't know if, how do I make the videos work in this? Will that work? If they don't work, it's okay. We can, maybe. Okay, they won't work. It's all right. We'll move along. All right. So at that event, 35 pets were vaccinated, microchipped, and licensed, and that was the kickoff. And then on February 25th, in honor of Spade Day USA, those of you who have been around the Humane Society, if you remember, we used to do big Spade Day events, because that was like a big deal. Now we can do big Spade Day events more than once a year, but that's how we kicked off our first actual spay and neuter event through the Good Mobile in Pomona. Sorry, I can't play these videos, but basically, then, you know, after January, of course wildfires hit, and it was full force. Our staff and volunteers were helping to support, so Fairplex was activated as an evacuation site. So we were taking food, supplies, et cetera, over there to support the Red Cross and pet owners in need. In addition to that, we did actually get some evacuees that got relocated to family and friends in our jurisdiction and needed us to actually take their pets for some time, because they couldn't keep the pets where they were going. In addition to that, we did support Pasadena Humane with loaning our horse trailer for them to do evacuations, and our medical director also donated her time on the weekend to assist with burn victims, et cetera. So here's some data. So this is through September of this year. So this is calendar year data. So you can see 2024 versus 2025. So let's cross our fingers for the last three months of the year that we don't gain traction, but so far, actually, the service calls are less. So we're hoping that holds true compared to last year. We also are handling less animals thus far, and so, and this is also in comparison to positive outcomes. So that doesn't mean, that number right there doesn't mean that there's all those negative outcomes in the gap. It just means that those may be animals that are also still in our care. So this is talking about animals that are transferred, animals that are adopted, and animals that are relocated. And the transfers are to adoption partners, so it could be to other shelters. We have partnerships as far up as Oregon and outside of the state. So we're transferring to any rescue partners as well as other shelters that, believe it or not, don't have enough adoptable domestic animals. So that's actually, we were just taking a transfer, we're taking another transport tomorrow to Eureka. So those are donor-funded transports, which are great. So this data is effective through October 14th. So whatever you see for the 2025 column, that's through the middle of October. So you can see that the low-cost vaccine, the low-cost vet care is absolutely a need. We've already serviced more pets this year, and we haven't even finished than we did last year. And that just speaks to the high cost for vet care, the affordability factor. We do, so we have a low cost, we have several low-cost programs. So we have the pet, the pit stop for pit bulls, the Chihuahua Challenge for Chihuahuas, the Husky Hustle for Huskies, and the Shepherd Shuffle for Shepherds. Then we also have cats. So if you own a cat, or if you're doing TNR, which is trap, neuter, spay, vaccinate, release. So for community cats, that's a program that not all shelters run. So residents can come in for a nominal fee, they can pay to have an animal fixed and vaccinated and re-released into a community. So those are for community cats. If you own a cat, that's also a low-cost fee as well. So our, our TNR rate is $70. In the past, there's been another local, high-volume, high-quality spay and neuter facility in this area that has done it for about the same price. They just overnight jumped to $150 a cat. So you can see with us trying to keep those costs lower, it's, it is a real need, and cats really do make a lot of litters overnight. And so that becomes a problem. There have been issues in other counties, San Bernardino County, Orange County, they have had typhus that have come up. So it's something that we monitor. And again, the code allows for you to return cats into the same area. It's just that you can't bring new sources of animals. So it's not like you can transfer a new animal into that area and then creating more typhus issues. So it's something to just, you know, we're always aware, we're always in communication with the local health department. So if we get calls, let's say for nuisance, which is separate than an individual resident bringing in a cat for a TNR surgery, if we get a property that says, you know, let's say, staff reaches out to us and say, we have a mobile home park that's got issues with 20 cats, right? That's a nuisance issue, and we'll come out and abate that, and we'll work with the property owner, the residents, to try to do a mass trapping situation. We'll fix the cats, and then we'll, we'll re-release them accordingly. So that's not the one-off, you know, community cat that somebody is interested in doing. So anytime there's ever a concern with nuisance issues, we always want you to call us, and that's in regards to, you know, wildlife as well. We'll come out and do yard audits. You guys are right here at the foothills. So we understand that that happens, right? We see coyotes, we see mountain lions. One of the things that happens a lot of times is that people will call us and say they saw a coyote and it has mange, and they'll say, what are you going to do about it? And really, the issue is, is that, number one, we can't trap coyotes and hold on to them. If we are trapping, trapping a coyote, it ends up in euthanasia unless we're relocating to a rehabilitator. The rehabilitators are full, for the most part, and if they could take the coyote, typically, they decline in care, and so they're not actually even able to treat that mange in a successful outcome. Even if they are able to treat the mange, they tend to get it again. So people that are seeing these coyotes and like, oh my gosh, they look so horrible. It is sad the way they look, but they're living long, functional lives. So unless there's an aggressive act, which is an act on an animal within six feet of a leash, or on a person, it's, it's, we're letting wildlife coexist. We still want to know about them so that we can track and kind of see what's happening. And we'll go out and do a yard audit. Maybe there's some issues. Maybe they're feeding cats 24/7 instead of timed feeding. You're never going to stop little old ladies from feeding cats. It's just not a thing that happens. So you can tell them not to feed, you can say you're going to tick at them, and they'll laugh at you, and they'll keep doing it. So we want to try to be mindful. We did have a recent issue, you know, you have MWD here, right? And so there's a water source. If you have food, if you have water, if you have shelter, they're going to come and they're going to hang out in your communities. They're also super highways, right? You'll see flood control channels, and people are like, oh my gosh, they're living in the flood control. They're not. They're just using them as a transportation highway. And you do have Sierra Laverne, right? So that property also adds to that. So just a lot of dynamics to be aware of, but if anybody is ever concerned, please give us a call, and we'll come out and address the situation. So in 2025, I apologize in advance, we did not make Fourth of July. I think that's the first time we have not been a part of Fourth of July in a really long time, but we definitely have it on our calendar for 2026. I know, I know. It's, it's a shame. I'm so sorry. You get a one J. Yeah, exactly. But we have been very active, several community events, several sponsorship support. We try to be present in the community and also to give back. So if there is something of interest, we have had a very busy October in all of our communities. So we always ask to invite us early so that we can get on your radar. And if we have competing events, then obviously we divide and conquer, as you will see in this next slide out. National Night Out, we got a lot of requests for National Night Out. I will confess, I was on the, on the volunteer list for Laverne, and I got switched over to La Habra. So I figured you'd forgive me on that. That's too good a vigil for you, I'm sure.
Well, I don't know. Peaches went to Claremont.
That's true.
And I was not happy about it.
Oh, okay. Well, Peaches isn't my dog, so you can't get mad at me about that one. But yes, we do have three pet therapy dogs that go out to do community. They have done three pet therapy visits in Laverne this year to different facilities, and they're all aproposy named after food, peaches, jam, and pork chop. Makes a complete meal. You can see two below in the picture here at Laverne, so we did make it out here. But it's always a great night. It's a big impact, because we're able to meet a lot of community members and have a lot of different discussions. And one of the things that we pride ourselves on is that we have all of our education material in English, Spanish, and in Mandarin. We recognize that that's a growing population, and the need for education and information is definitely there. Ontario Rain is a new partner of ours. That is Pork Chop Down Center, one of our therapy dogs. Pork Chop actually came to us, was dumped on our doorstep right before Christmas one year, left in a, left in a plastic tote, and luckily, the coyotes did not get him. Great dog, but could not walk the entire rear back end. And so our medical team went to town and dogged it at being fostered, and then ultimately became one of our pet therapy dogs. The gentlest giant, likes to nibble on your hand all the time if you ever get to meet him. So Ontario Rain's been a great partner for community events, comes out and supports our reading event that we have, our Humane Heroes Reading Event, where kids can come and reach to shelter pets. Some new benefits for adopters. So we started partnering with Fetch Pet Insurance. It's not a hard sell. It's more about trying to protect your pets. As I mentioned earlier, you know, we've seen an increase in our low-cost and affordable vet services, because one of the prohibitive costs of having a pet is the cost of medical care. And so affordable pet insurance through the process of adoption, that's something that people can sign on at the time of adoption or post-adoption. In addition, we have partnered with Petsal. So if you come and adopt a pet from us, there is an app, and you can basically get this pet parent support, and it's comprehensive. It's got all of your documents from the time that you adopted, all of your vet care, even if you don't use us for vet care, you can store it all there, a whole bunch of pet parent resources. So really wrapping it up in one package. We had our Clear the Kennels event. We adopted over 50 animals in one day. If you've never been, we used to do a Clear the Shelters event in partnership with NBC, but we found that going out alone and doing a different day, theirs is a one-month-long event, which makes it pretty, pretty long and exhausting event, and also not having it on the hottest day of the year always helps. So we did that this year in partnership with All Pro. It was a great event. We just had a successful Howlowine and Brew tasting event. We brought it back after a five-year hiatus when COVID hit. Obviously, it had to go away. So that was at the McCoy Equestrian Center in Chino Hills on Friday night, sold out with 300 tickets. It was a great event and fundraising for the animals. So what's not to like about that? And of course, I have to, you know, make a shameless plug. We do have a Posen shop, which is all the Halloween swag you can get with all kinds of sayings for you and your pet. You can go onto our website at ivhsspc.org, and you can buy some swag. And some exciting news, those of you that are on the council and some of the staff know that we have acquired San Gabriel Valley Humane Society. So we have been in the process of the acquisition and talks for a couple of years, but that acquisition was supposed to take place officially July 1. We had some hiccups as acquisitions happen, and that actually is officially happening 11/1. So on November 1st, we are actually taking over operations of the shelter campus in addition to the contracts of Temple City, San Gabriel, and sheltering and after-hour service for Doherty. Same logo, it will be the same logo, two different names. So our parent corporation, if you will, is Humane Society Pomona Valley, Inc. So we do business as Inland Valley Humane Society, and we will do business as San Gabriel Valley Humane Society. So coming up here on next week, the week from tomorrow, today's Monday, a week from tomorrow, the 28th, we will be in your community doing licensed canvassing. So what that means is that you will see people coming door to door. They have official licensed IVHS uniforms, they drive their own personal vehicles, but they will be coming door to door to knock. They will come to every single residence, and if you are not home, they will door hang. So if you get a flyer and you say, I don't have a pet, you can disregard. But they will, if they notice that you have animals, there, we have the software, the capability to make sure that we note that, and then you will get a mailing to let you know that you need to license your pet. So I encourage all of you that if you have a pet, that you get in there and you license now, because you do not want the penalty. Statutorily, we can go back three years for penalties, but we don't. We will go back two years. So license penalty, license penalty. So we encourage you to get in now and license your pet. I cannot express the importance of that. Pet licenses, the pet licensing always tends to be a catch-me-if-you-can situation. You don't want to have us catch you if your dog gets out, and then you have to license.
Why does she continue to look at us?
I don't know, Mary. I don't know.
Well, she's looking at.
I can't get away with it.
Wendy's looking at your swag here and the sweatshirts. She showed me the sweatshirts over there. I'm going, it's just like, I love it. They're really good.
Yeah, we have, we have some, we have some.
You gotta look on their website, guys. It's pretty cool.
Yeah, we have some pretty creative marketing folks on our team. So, yeah, so we say licensing in a snap. That's a little acronym. So you can license multiple ways. You can go online, you can come in person to the shelter, you can mail it, you can call in. There's really no excuse. And with DocuPet, it's your own portal, it's your own account. You can go in there, you can add pets, you can remove pets as needed. You can either, you can even get specialty tags. A portion of specialty tag sales are donated back to the Humane Society on behalf of DocuPet. So, and they also have a, their, their big thing about their platform is the return to home function, and that's improved in functionality, expanded. They now partner with Petco Love Lost, which is somebody that we partner with and most shelters partner with to try to reunite pets for lost and found. But there's an added feature, there's also, you know, AI involved. There's also, you can buy the trackers for your pet if you're interested in doing that, and you get real time on an app, and you can see, and it kind of, it's kind of like the next door ring. You can flood the neighborhood and let everybody know that Fluffy's missing, and then somebody else can pick it up and say, hey, I saw Fluffy on this corner. Really, shelters are the end of the line, and I don't mean that like, that it's negative. I mean that that's the last resort. So we really want to try to add the functionality of return to home, return to finder. You know, we really want to keep pets out of shelters, and so does DocuPet. So it's been a positive partnership for the community and us. And there's my contact information. If anybody has any questions.
So you can donate anything, like if we had stuff that never got used for a pet, collars, leashes, things like that, can we bring them to Humane Society?
Yeah, if you have gently-used stuff, you can bring it to us, or new. We like that.
Yeah.
But if it's heavily soiled, kind of like any of the donation, we say, please don't, because then we have to pay to dispose of it. But yeah, especially coming into the winter, we are always looking for blankets and towels. We use the towels in the medical center to transport animals after surgery to their kennel. And so, yeah, either blankets and towels are always appreciated. We also have an Amazon wishlist, so you can go onto our website and also find that information.
I think that would be important, because I know a lot of people like to donate.
Yeah, absolutely.
Some can't have animals, some can, but you know what I mean? It's to help other people with your needs, because you guys are doing a really good job.
Well, thank you. And we also have our pet food pantry. So we say, take what you can, take what you need and leave what you can. So there's food, there's, you know, animal clothing, there's leashes and collars, and an assortment of toys, and all kinds of stuff that we're stocking regularly. And so if anybody ever wants to donate to that, they can do that as well.
Okay, you can donate preferably new.
Yes, because if it's food that you're donating, it needs to be new and unopened bags. Yes.
And what date is it that you're going to be canvassing?
Uh, we can't. The 28th. Councilmember Johnson, the 28th, we will start. Tuesday through Saturday, you will see us out in your community.
But exactly what area will you be starting?
We will be at your house on Friday at 2:00.
I'm a dead giveaway, because they're the loud ones. That's wonderful. Thank you so much. You do a great job. I'm really, to see the combination of the two entities, that's going to work out well.
Yeah, we're excited to bring more programs and services to San Gabriel Valley.
Where is the Humane Society in San Gabriel? I don't remember.
So it is off of Walnut Grove and Grand, on Grand. It's actually right across the flood control channel, right adjacent to the city maintenance facility.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. So it's nice, it's right in the middle there.
Yeah, literally.
Spans your, very good.
Yes, it'll be a very busy time, but we're excited and looking forward to it.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much. We always appreciate when you come in and tell us about our animals that need to be licensed. Cash, yes, on the 28th?
Yes. You just want a shirt. Oh, that's great. Thank you. We appreciate you.
You gotta look on their website. It's, it's a crackup. If you have animals, it's like, totally them, you know? But thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Oh, my goodness. Oh, my goodness. Oh, you guys. Next is the proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, encouraging all residents to challenge the social norms that enable domestic violence, offering meaningful support to survivors and acknowledge the dedicated efforts of those working to prevent and respond to this issue. Will Pat Bell from the House of Ruth please come forward?
So our proclamation to you and to the House of Ruth states, whereas domestic violence impacts millions of people each year throughout the nation, affecting families and children across generations. And whereas during National Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month, we stand firmly with the tens of millions of people who have experienced intimate partner violence and we thank the first responders, service providers and community members who work to make sure that every American can live in safety with dignity and respect. And whereas every survivor should know that they are not alone and we must work together to embrace the many cultural ways of healing from violence and oppression, hold space for survivors and center those most marginalized in all of our efforts to end domestic violence. And whereas, House of Ruth, Inc. provides domestic violence resources as well as support services to the East End of Los Angeles County and the West End of San Bernardino County, including counseling, housing, intervention, education and legal advocacy. Now be it proclaimed by the City of Laverne that the month of October 2025 be recognized as Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month. And the city council calls upon every resident to change the social norms that permit domestic violence, provide meaningful support, to change the social norms that permit domestic violence, provide meaningful support of survivors and express gratitude to those working diligently on prevention and response efforts dated this 20th day of October 2025. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council Members and residents of the City of Laverne. House of Ruth has been providing services to your community and both Los Angeles and San Bernardino County from about Baldwin Park all the way out to Fontana for the last 49 years. So it's, it's unfortunately continues to be a pervasive issue. It continues to be an issue that is in one in every four households. And we're committed to maintain our work and provide a safe space for survivors to come. We operate our main outreach office in Pomona. We operate a confidential shelter in Los Angeles County. And we operate a secondary office in Ontario for San Bernardino clients. So we encourage all of your residents to reach out to us. You can find our hotline number, our 24 hour crisis hotline on our website. And we're available to be there just to offer safety and support. So thank you very much for recognizing this month. I'd like you to remember us all year long because it is a critical support service that we offer to your residents. Thank you.
And our residents do to support you as far as, because I know there's always a need. And so what can we do and obviously bring it to Pomona Place, but let us know what we can.
There's, you know, this is, this has been a particularly tough year with federal funding. We're 70% federal funded. So it has been a challenge for us. So any type of a monetary donation, of course, would be greatly appreciated. We are coming up on the holidays and we are launching a Thanksgiving wishlist. Really, it's to restock our food pantry. Our food pantry is very low, canned goods, dry goods. If you find that you can bring in or do a food drive, that would be extremely helpful for Thanksgiving. We're also doing a holiday wishlist for the upcoming holiday store that we offer. And that's taking new items, which would be toys or gifts for adults and teens. And you can bring all of that into our Pomona outreach and find more details on our website.
We will now move on to announcements of upcoming community events. We have our first, this is just for upcoming events, not public comment. And Adrian Romero.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers and staff. I'd like to introduce a few events that are taking place at Laverne Library this month. LA County Library has partnered with In-N-Out Burgers. And we're holding a reading challenge called Cover to Cover. When children read five books or for 300 minutes, they can receive a gift card good for a free hamburger or cheeseburger. They complete this challenge three times for up to three hamburgers or cheeseburgers. And to participate, children and their parents just need to pick up a reading log from the library and return the complete log before November 15. We also have three more sessions of our Smart Start Storytimes for toddlers ages two to five on Fridays at 11:00. During these sessions, toddlers can enjoy books, songs and rhymes while learning school readiness skills. And on Saturday, October 25th, we'll be holding a jack-o'-lantern craft for teens. During this program, teens can create their very own jack-o'-lantern from paper mache and learn the history behind some Halloween traditions. And I also want to thank the Department of Parks and Rec. We're inviting us to a trunk or treat. We were able to hold a booth there and we gave out over a thousand scholastic books. So our booth is heavily busy.
Well, you have a captive audience there too. That's a great event. Just a great event. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Any other announcements? Ms. Kalusek. And you have jam for sale.
I do. I will mention that as well. All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Kathy Kalusek. I'm Vice President of our Laverne Historical Society. We also were at Trunk or Treat, had a great time. We got to bring the 1938 International, had him all dressed up in his witch's hat and skeleton drivers and lots of people took pictures. So it was, it was great. It was a lot of fun. So happy to participate with that. Upcoming on November 8th, from 11:00 to 3:00 PM, we're going to have our historic home tours and vintage sale, not just vintage, we'll have other, you know, gifty things. So, so come, you know, and do your, start doing your early holiday shopping. At 11:00 AM, we will be doing a bronze marker dedication at 2610 Third Street. 2610 Third Street will be the place you buy tickets anyway. But if you can come right at 11:00 for the bronze marker and then you get to tour three houses and buy some vintage treasures. We'll also have jams and jellies, Sherry's homemade jams and jellies. I have a few here, so if anybody, you know, hit me up after the meeting. It's 10 for the large jar, five for the little jar donations, of course. And also it's time to join the historical society or renew. We're going to keep our rates the same, 20 for individuals, 25 for family and 200 for life members. And, you know, if you're a new member and signing up now, this will take you through 2026 because it is a yearly regardless of when you sign up. And I'm going to leave a few flyers on the table over there. Oh, I also have a flyer with our upcoming events calendar. So I'm going to set that to the side and, and we take donations too, so.
Bitcoin. You need to start taking Bitcoin.
Hey, whatever, you know, bring it on.
Digital currency.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anybody else announcements? We'll, yes. Yes, absolutely. Erin Beilstein, please come to the mic.
Good evening. I just wanted to remind everyone that the community survey is still open. It's been open about two weeks. We have 52 responses. Last year we had like 350 responses. So you can go take the survey at laverncay.gov/survey. It's also on our social media. I've tried to make it as convenient as possible. It's on their homepage banner on our website. But we'd really appreciate that feedback as a reminder. It goes towards strategic planning. So our strategic planning will be in early February and having these responses helps us know what direction the community is, is thinking and feeling and how we can take action on that. There is also a raffle associated with it. I don't think I mentioned that last time. That was successful last time and we had some pretty cool prizes, which we will again. So for next council meeting, I will have some names for you, but I'm hoping to have a bigger pool of names than just 52 for now. So if you guys can spread the word and we will keep doing that ourselves, but that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beilstein. Appreciate that. We will move to close announcements and move to the, we're just not going to move. We have announcements for our council. Go ahead.
I don't know if you have gotten your tickets, but this Friday for the, those with intellectual and development disabilities, the Halloween hop from 5:00 to 8:00 in our community center. I know my daughter loves these dances and has fun at every single one of them. So I know we got our tickets, but they're going fast. So make sure that you come and get your ticket there. It'll be a full house and wear their costumes. It's a really fun, fun event for, for children and for young adults, sorry.
Mr. Johnson.
I think they added this one.
We do have some things coming up. I was going to do that under public comment, but yesterday I was at the Foothill Citrus Veterinary Hospital that just opened up. Used to be a chiropractor and Dr. Higgins. They took the whole center and it's one of the finest surgery centers I have ever seen. The other Citrus Valley Veterinary Clinic, which is next to the Pomona Valley Hospital, the emergency hospital, is now going to be cats only. Those like first of its kind. And Angela, Dr. James and Angela White, they are incredible. And the one thing about the animal hospital is, is that some hospitals, let's just say they're more in how much it's going to, I'm going to make off your animal. They're, what can we do and save you money and making sure we're giving you the best care, the least cost? But they are the most caring people I think I've ever met. Our animals that will be licensed soon. On the 28th. Honestly, I have, there, we have veterinary clinics and they're all good. It's just that they have made a massive investment, a full surgery center with recovery rooms, with probably eight or nine of the exam rooms, x-rays, you name it. They've done an amazing job and they're so, their staff is as loving as they are. And I think they went to the Ohio State Veterinary School. And a lot of the people that come from that, they're bringing new vets from the school. So it was amazing. They gave away prizes, they had raffles, they had food yesterday from 12:00 to 4:00. And it was amazing.
Two of the nicest people ever. And the follow up after concern of one of our pets, they, they called once a week for three weeks, making sure that we were okay and following up with them too. So very exceptional people.
How many doctors will text you and say, hi, how are they doing? You know, or if you go back, there's an air infection and it's the same infection, they don't charge you. It's like, that doesn't happen though. But they were wonderful. Another thing that's coming is Wednesday, Trader Joe's is opening at 8:55 AM. There'll be a ribbon cutting and at 9:00, it's going to be a cattle call. So they don't do a lot of fanfare. They're really just about the residents. So it's opening, it's going to be just a wonderful addition to our neighborhood. Although I think that it was in the news that Amazon Fresh will be closing. They'll be probably closing all of the Amazon Fresh and the ones in England. Then they'll be branding some to Whole Foods, but I think that Amazon Fresh is done. So we do have a lot of things on the back of the page in our upcoming. We have the downtown Trick or Treat and costumes downtown. And that's coming in the next, I think that's 27th. And it starts, I think, in the early afternoon, like was it two to five or two to seven or something? Also, Councilmember Johnson and myself, there's a new, it is not just weightlifting, but it's, it's called The Forge. It's off of, what's the?
Palomares?
Palomares. It's, it's incredible. They have invested a tremendous amount of money, but it's a tilt up building. You go inside and you can have private training or you can do your own weight training. They have some of the most advanced rock climbing walls I've ever seen that move, hydraulically move. They have invested a tremendous amount and they have a private session you can do upstairs with Pilates and all sorts of different stuff. But I, this was weeks ago and I forgot to mention everybody. We should really give them a shout out. But they're over at Palomares, just literally right in the middle, across from Damian, across from the field at Damian. It's just in a tilt up, very, it's, doesn't show itself well, but you get in there and it's just incredible. So with that. Okay. Thank you all for sharing your announcements. We will move on to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are routine and will be enacted by one motion unless a member of the city council or a member of the audience requests separate discussion or just wants to make statement on one of the items. Council, any requests to pull any of the items? We did have a resident wanting to pull items, but he is not here, discuss those items. So we will move forward with the consent calendar. City Manager Domer, we're good on that. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I have proof.
Of second. Vote please.
The consent calendar was moved by Crosby, seconded by Cashal Figuita and approved by Bo.
Thank you very much. There's one item up for public hearing tonight. The request for time extension on vesting tentative track map number 82001, 500 Baseline Road. I'd like to open up the public hearing and ask the city manager, please call for the staff member who will be reporting. That would be Mr. Holland.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Yes, before you tonight is a public hearing to consider the extension of a vesting tentative track map that was approved back in September 20th of 2021. This address is 500 baseline. And the project includes the subdivision of 19.4 acres approximately into nine lots. Of those nine lots, seven were identified for a single family residential dwelling units. As I said, the project was originally approved back in 2021. With that original approval of the vesting tentative track map, they got two years. At that time, the project was in unincorporated LA County. And part of the approval process also included an annexation project. The annexation of that property was completed in 2024 and the applicant continues to work on moving the project forward. However, at this time, they are requesting another year of extension. For council's background, the maximum extensions that can be allowed per the state code is a total of 10 years. So with this, this extension, we are, if approved, of course, with council's direction, that would be this beginning of the fifth year of that extension. So they'd have five more years to work through their process and hopefully bring plans into the city for a plan check and ultimately moving into permits and construction. The public code, sorry, the city code does designate that this process be conducted once a year. Because it's a vesting tentative track map, it does get granted certain benefits for that. And so that's why we move through this process annually, bringing back as a notice public hearing for the city council's consideration. That concludes my report. Well, actually, let me read the recommendation real quick. It's recommended that city council adopt the resolution granting a one year time extension on vesting tentative track map number 82001 pursuant to the provisions of Title VII, Division II, Chapter 3 of the Government Code of the State of California, establishing a new expiration date on the vesting tentative track map as November 3rd of 2026. That concludes my report. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Holland. I'm going to go ahead and open a public comment. Do we have any public comment on this item? I would say no, we're going to close public comment. Council, any comments on this item? Any? No? I just hope that they, this is really going to be a very nice tract if they can get this developed. I know that they're, they keep pushing and I know that there were some issues before, but it's really well laid out. So with that, I will accept a motion. Let me read that again. Motion to approve the dop resolution granting a one year time extension on vesting tentative track map number 82001 pursuant to the provisions of Title VII, Division II, Chapter 3 of the Government Code of the State of California, establishing the new expiration date of the VTTM. State of California, establishing the new expiration date of the VTTTM number eight two zero zero one as November third, two thousand twenty-six.
Second.
Vote please.
Motion for that item was made by Johnson, seconded by Crosby and approved by Bo.
Thank you very much. There's one item for discussion calendar tonight, the award of contract, the Arrow Highway Urban Greening Project. City Manager Domer, please call for the staff member who will be reporting. That would be Mr. Howling. Thank you.
Yes. So this item before you council is a, an award of a contract. This project's got some interesting backgrounds, so I want to highlight it to you. It's been around for a little bit. Project started back in July of two thousand twenty-one where the City of Laverne entered into a grant agreement with the California National Resources Agency. And that project's scope included one point three miles of median landscape improvements. The limits originally were from White Avenue and then heading east out to Orange Grove into Pomona. So from that agreement, the process moved as it typically does through acquiring consultants to develop plans. Plans were completed in two thousand twenty-three, at which point staff took, took a look at the estimates and the scope and identified a concern.
Mr. Howling, if we could wait a minute, we do have a conflict of possible. She lives within ten feet? This is literally outside of her door. They're a gated community where she lives. Yes.
It's still going east. Yes.
Yeah, it's going. So we should probably, you know, a bonus of caution, recruise her. You're out of here. We're good. Thank you. Sorry about that.
No, my apologies. So the project, as I was saying, the one point three mile segment did extend in the city of Pomona. The split of, and this is based on the center line of the roadway, it was approximately forty, forty-three percent in the city of Laverne and fifty-six percent in the city of Pomona. Agreements were executed between the two agencies to coordinate this project and move it forward, but city, the city of Laverne was the holder of the grant funds and intended to be the lead agency on this project. As I was saying, the project plans were completed in two thousand twenty-three, at which point staff took a look at the scope and the valuation and identified a concern as the awarded funds were to the tune of five hundred sixty-one thousand dollars. However, at that time, post, well, still kind of in COVID, but coming out of COVID, construction costs had jumped significantly. So rather than move forward with a project that had already been on its face, identified of having a funding issue, staff evaluated a few different options to see what we can do to close that gap. In that work, we reached out to the state granting agency to see if additional funds were available. They unfortunately were not. As well as the city of Pomona, which also was not positioned to add more funds to the project. And thus that left us with a position where we want to protect the grant money, but really didn't have a way to spend it. So we requested extensions on the project and have continued to work through the various challenges of it. Some of the ideas that we also evaluated and one that's worthy of note is B Street is a project that was completed last year. In that project, there was some, some heavy tree removal due to just species overgrowing that space. We did reach out to the state to see if they would allow us to re, remove, I guess, locate that project scope to B Street. However, that was also denied during part two, the basis of the grant award being tied to census block data. And with that information, we were, you know, ultimately frankly tied to that area in the city of Laverne because that is the only area that fit the specs of that grant awarded. So working with Director Wu, we continued our discussion with the state and identified an opportunity to where the scope could be reduced. And so we were able to reutilize those plans originally completed in two thousand twenty-three. We cut off a significant portion of the scope predominantly. Most of it was in Pomona that we cut off, although we still do touch Pomona with the current scopes. So the new scope covers from White Avenue to Fulton. And was conveniently also tied to an irrigation system that ended in that spot as well. So yeah, moving on to kind of what is to be expected out of the scope, it's a median landscape project. So right now those medians, they are barren, they are not planted. There's, there's nothing there. It is a gateway to the city of Laverne. And that goes back to the original intent of the project is to beautify the gateway entry to the city of Laverne off of Arrow. One thing that I do want to highlight and make sure that expectations are clear is because this project is funded by grant funds and those grant funds have an interest in carbon sequestration. We were limited to not planting trees that exceeded fifteen gallons. So typically when we do projects in landscaping, you know, your typical tree might be a twenty-four inch box, maybe up to a thirty-six inch box for the larger specimens. But these will be fifteen gallons and the fifteen gallons in context are probably some of the the larger specimens you might be able to pick up at your big box, you know, whether it's Home Depot, Lowe's or so on. But they will not, they will not be as substantial of trees as, as what might be typically expected from a municipal landscaping project. But nonetheless, it gives the trees the opportunity to grow and flourish and sequester carbon. The landscaping plans in the system are well-o compliant, low water usage. It will be very sparsely planted, but certainly improved over what we've got. So very California drought tolerant, kind of the new style of, of what we're doing in the state. The project was put out to bid and we opened bids on September twenty-third of two thousand twenty-five. There were a total of eight bidders that submitted bids. Oppenheimer National was identified as the lowest bid at three hundred eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. The engineer's estimate was at four hundred thirty thousand dollars and the high bid was at five ninety-one, five hundred ninety-one thousand dollars for context and the numbers out there. Want to highlight to council that there was a formal protest submitted by the second bidder against the number first, the number one bidder. On the basis was a minor clerical error in the sum of their bid prices. It did not affect their ultimate price. I've had a discussion with the low bidder and they're very willing and happy to complete the work under what was the intended number for their, their bid. So that brings us to the budget and kind of looking ahead at what's out there. As I said, the project was originally awarded five hundred sixty-one thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars. There is a rundown of the budget in the agenda report for council's consideration. I do want to highlight one thing in that the twenty-five percent contingency, that's not typical. Generally, we, we look at ten percent while it's not a hard rule. It's, it's kind of a default. But, but because we have those funds that were assigned to the project, we want to make sure that we maximize that. So clarity on where that contingency might go is, I really don't have that for council. We might look at changing some of the service for mulch to DG and enhancing the project. But those things will be things that we need to negotiate with the contractor. So it could be that we don't spend it. But I will certainly try to maximize those funds that put into, into the street for the city of Laverne. So back to the recommendations. So the recommendations for tonight is that the city council award a public works construction contract to Oppenheimer National, the lowest, most responsible bidder in the amount of three hundred eighteen thousand five hundred dollars for the Arrow Highway Urban Greening project and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement and authorize the public works director to issue change orders not exceeding twenty-five percent of the construction budget for a total possible construction contract of three hundred eighty-nine thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars. And finally authorize the city manager to issue a purchase order in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars to RK Consulting Group to manage the construction phase of the project. With that, that concludes my report and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Chief Engineer Howling. Questions?
Yes.
Sir Johnson?
Now that stretch of road between White Avenue and Bolton Road is a pretty beat up roadway.
Yes.
And I was hoping that we would get help with Pomona in repaving that.
So Councilmember Johnson, yeah, I fully agree with you. It is a rough stretch of pavement.
Probably one of the worst.
It, yes, yes. Definitely on our radar, something we'd like to partner with Pomona. While nothing's official yet, there have been some discussions at a staff level of possible future improvements in there and also involve the cog as well. So as kind of details take shape there, that is a paramount concern of ours to making sure that that piece of pavement gets taken care of with what might be future improvements in that area.
Just a rough, rough road.
Yes.
See some done. I know before Meg left, we discussions with her, hopefully partner.
Yes. Yes. Being that she moved on to the city of Pomona, I think we've got at least somebody who knows what our concerns are.
Well, you had mentioned the cog and they do have a project that's been funded.
I believe it has been funded.
It's so I think that's part of that. So it's good to have, we'll have a conversation with the cog staff and to find out what that entails. But I think it's part of that, Steve. I do, and I think that would be great.
It's really all of Arrow from San Dimas all the way through. Since B Street got improved and fixed, that's our next one with the tree roots going into, especially in the far, the inner lane.
The catapult roots, yeah. The catapults in the other lane. Now, they've done a nice job cutting those back, at least patching it. But I mean, at some point we do need to make permanent. But Arrow Highway, when you go past White, I would agree with Councilmember Johnson that it's probably the worst and that, that's total failure. There's, there's nothing you can save there.
Yeah, you know, very much like B Street is the tree species there, beautiful trees. Unfortunately, the roots have, have caused quite a bit of havoc in the number one lanes for each direction. So that's been something that we've been looking at and planning on. There are a number of active projects, the, you know, with the gold line wrapping up their work, that's certainly been an item that we don't want to get in there and pave it brand new and have them tear it up. So as they're kind of packing up and wrapping up their work, we also have other projects in the air that might have development. You know, ideally take care of some of those projects with the pavement as restoration with their work. But certain, certainly that stretch gets, you know, Director Wu and I talked quite a bit about that and it is on the horizon. I'm not sure I could promise when because it will be a significant project and quite a, quite an undertaking from a cost perspective, but certainly something that we're aware of and, and keeping our eyes on. Yes.
Any other question? We're gonna open up public comment? Any wish to speak on this item? That would be no. Oh, yes. Oh, yeah. Ivan Gallegos. He wants to. Those are pointing fingers, not raising hands.
I guess I have a, I just, I have just a couple of questions. As far as the well, regarding Oppenheimer National and the contractor RK, I'm curious as to who decides what types of plants or trees get planted into the medium? And, and then I would like to request that if possible, that either, you know, our city man, our public works manager or Oppenheimer or RK kindly look at California native plants which are sorely lacking as far as plants that are along freeways, highways, et cetera. But I think it would be really good to consider California native plants, which are also drought tolerant, right? And, you know, just to get some nicer.
Get some California back in there?
Well, also, you know, to get some pollinators as well, right? And, you know, they attract California native plants. Attract a lot of, again, pollinators, hummingbirds, monarchs, right? With milkweed, et cetera, hummingbirds. Bees. So anyways, that's just what my request, if possible, and it doesn't, you know, hurt the budget that we look at California native plants.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gallegos, appreciate that. Any wish to speak on this item? We'll go ahead and close public comment. Do you have a, please? And I was gonna make a comment that the fifteen gallon trees are much less expensive than a twenty-four or a thirty-six.
Absolutely. Yes.
Forty-eight.
Well, and hopefully it's not gonna contribute to asphalt.
Anyway, you had.
So as far as the design, the design came from Albert Webb and Associates, they're a landscape architect group. So certainly something that we look to have the experts give us that feedback. Is part of the grant scope, the plant palette or the selection of the trees that did go through the state on that. There are a number of species. I'm not sure I can vouch that all of them are California native, but I know for a fact that most or some, many of them are. One of the featured trees out there that's in the landscape plans is the California laurel. And so that is a drought tolerant plant that they definitely approved and where advocates get placed in it. As far as flowers, I don't know that we'll have a bunch of flowers out there, but certainly any greenery will be an improvement on what we've gotten. Like I said, the, the scope of the grant was, is carbon sequestration. So it'll definitely soften that space, which is well, quite paved. So yes.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Council, any comments? I do have a comment. I want to thank you for a very extensive bid and I really enjoy, I like the fact that it was multiple bidders. Obviously this is a little different, so there's multiple bidders, but I do like to see the price range and I do like to see how competitive and I do like that you explained that there was an issue on a line item, but it was, at the end, it all came out the same. And it's, that's the kind of thing, and I understand after our conversation too, sometimes it can't happen that way all the times because you only have two bidders, you gotta bring it back to us. We have to say, hey, we want to see more competitive bids, but thank you. You guys did a very good job. Director Wu, nice job. You guys did a really nice job on that. Thank you, Cody. Appreciate that. With that, do I have a motion for approval of the recommendation to award a public works construction contract to Oppenheimer National, the lowest, most responsible bidder in the amount of three hundred eighteen thousand five hundred the Arrow Highway Urban Greening Project and authorize staff to issue change orders not exceeding twenty-five percent of the construction budget for a total possible construction contract cost of three hundred eighty-nine thousand one twenty-five and authorize staff to issue a purchase order in the amount of forty-five thousand to RK Consulting Group to manage the construction phase of the project. Have a motion.
Move it through.
Second? Vote please.
Motion by Johnson, seconded by Cashal Figueta. Councilmember Lau recusing herself, four oh, approved.
In a food coma back there, a cookie coma. Sorry, she's non-responsive. There is no other business tonight, so we move on to public comments. It's the time set aside for anyone wishing to address the city council on items not listed on the agenda, but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from engaging discussion on an item on their posted agenda. Your concerns may refer to staff or place for discussion at a later date. There's a three-minute timeline, timeframe limit for public comments at this time. Those wishing to speak, please come up to the mic or announce yourself. Any wish to speak right now in public comment? Mr. Gavaldon, please.
Good evening. It's been a minute since I've been here to talk about stuff, but I've attended, had the opportunity to attend a couple of meetings in the last couple of weeks regarding the water and sewer rate. And a general opportunity to hear about what's going on with the city and its finances. And I wrote this big long thing and I'm gonna save it because I feel like I can, I can kind of talk without reading off a piece of paper. I just worry about time. But I'm very concerned that the news that took up approximately thirteen percent of this flyer that went out to the community was probably just discarded. And a majority of the people in this city still do not know, we're not aware of the impact on their cost of living in Laverne in, you know, just a few months is gonna have on them directly. People are talking about, you know, doubling or more depending on where you live in the city. And as a resident of the city for a long time, I moved my dad here about ten years ago. I'm considering moving my mother here from Washington as well, but I have to look at everything, including the cost of living. And I happen to also be the treasure for meals and wheels. So I do that and I also volunteer a couple of times a week to deliver meals to folks that need a little help, a little help. And I guarantee you, most of these people in the city, including what Mr. Domer had correctly cited as an aging community that just can't keep up with its tax burden for the cost of city services because people have lived here for a long time, including folks that live up where you are, Tim, and you Cash, that bought their homes a long time ago and probably paid a lot less than they're worth today. But those people bought those homes on an income that they thought would be enough to survive. And the folks down here in the middle and down on the bottom of the city, they probably have even less to kind of pay for the cost increases that are being proposed. So I guess the bottom line to my, my, you know, lengthy explanation of my, my So I guess the bottom line to my, my, you know, lengthy explanation of my, my concern is that I really think that the proposed increase, well, reasonable to understand how it's necessary to cover the cost of the water and sewer rates, the math is, is not, you know, above my ability to understand why it's necessary. It's the fact that I didn't like the response that I heard, quite frankly, from somebody that attended one of the meetings about mismanagement. I feel that that's deflecting. I feel like it's trying to move beyond what's happening and what we need to do to look forward. I would prefer to understand when we, when we take this out of the silo of that particular cost increase to the community is all the other things that are going on too. Because I also brought up in one of the meetings that the mayor was not there, but Councilman Johnson was there, is that the city is also going through a negotiation for our police services. That's reasonable to understand too, but the math is the math. And when I hear things like 8% increase year over year, question I asked the city manager in that meeting was, do we plan to earn more than 8% more year over year? So if we go from sewer rates going up in the city to the cost of our police services, our emergency services, overall with the fire department considered, all the people in the city that have been doing a good job for the city and they're, when they want their raises. And I hear that we're not going to get 8% more. I hear that is a unsustainable cost curve for city and the services it provides and therefore to the community in whole. So if more cost increases are coming down the pipeline, I think everybody needs to be really transparent because you have, what, four mobile home parks in your district? Steve, you have a couple in your district. Wendy has a couple at least, or maybe Wendy has the other lion's share. And Tim and Cash, you guys have people up in the hills that have lived there a long time that are sitting on equity, but not on cash. So please consider all that as you try to lessen the impact of that cost on folks and their daily lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gavaldon. I also want to thank you for your Meals on Wheels participation. I think you guys delivered 408 meals last month. Was that? Yeah. So thank you very much. I know that's a, thank you. Just leave it at that. People are in great need out there and I appreciate your comments. Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on public comment? That, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Mr. Crosby.
Thank you. Just want to make sure that everybody stays safe for Halloween. Drive slow out there. There's a.
Or don't drive at all.
Lot of kids that are going to be walking around, especially VD Mansion and the downtown area, big two hubs of where kids go out. And I do have a question for Mr. Domer. I know at the last meeting, we spoke about, resident came about pickleball. I know that some things have happened since then and want to know what is the city doing or looking into for about the pickleball courts?
Yes, pickleball has been banned nationwide. No.
In the city of Laverne.
Last week, we, staff went out there, Parks and Rec staff, public work staff. We went to about five or six different locations around the pickleball courts and then onto Peyton, took decibel readings as a kind of a, a pre condition. We will keep those decibel readings. We are ordering some sound attenuation blankets that will be hung on the west and north fence. No, but the, on the pickleball court fence for that court, then we'll take decibel readings after that. And it's of course during play to see how it goes. So this will be kind of a test for those sound attenuation blankets. Was interesting that on Peyton, the squirrels were actually louder than what was coming on the pickleball. And then the swim coach was, swim coach was loud. But yeah, so.
We're going to put a blanket over the, the.
Yes.
Yeah. This is the swimming area.
Yes.
They have those on Amazon, the curled squirrel blanket. Yes, little teeny ones.
Thank you for your follow-up for our residents' concern.
There should be a couple more weeks. We are ordering the blankets and they're coming as they come.
Good. Councilmember Johnson, squirrel blankets.
Squirrel. Been a great week.
I mean, a few words.
We've had quite a few meetings to attend. It's been nice to be with the public to explain what's going on, at least in our view. And hope it educates residents as to what we have going on in contract negotiations or whatever other comments concerns residents have had at our town hall meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Councilmember Lau.
I just wanted to share a note from one of our residents. Elise Castro sent a message a couple of days ago about our city workers, particularly our facilities and public works folks. So I wanted to make sure that you heard. But he was sending his commendations because of the work that you all did, helping to clean up the streets over on Wheeler and Foothill. I understand there was a lot of trash left at the bus stop. So I think that, you know, I just wanted to highlight, a lot of times we think of public works, we think about the big things or we don't think about them at all because everything's working. And so I think, you know, when we drive through our city, you know, we should all do our part to pick up trash and everything else. But for the big things that happen, if you, that you don't see sometimes, or that you wonder, oh, there was something there and it went away. It's our public works folks and our staff that are out there doing the work to make sure that the city of Laverne remains beautiful. And so I urge us all to try to pick up after ourselves, but just wanted to extend thanks to the department for the work that you all have been doing. And so I just wanted to let you know that one of the residents took the time to take some photos and sent a note of thanks. So I wanted to share that. And then I would just echo Councilmember Crosby's remarks about Halloween. I love Halloween. It's on a Friday this year. I mean, it's my birthday month, but I mean, it's Halloween. But Benita is, you know, goes off every year. I mean, I am simultaneously sad, but also happy that I don't live in that area because I think if you live there, you have to like sign the code of conduct to like, you know, you must decorate your house and you must have like a thousand dollars worth of candy because I don't know how else you do that. But thank you to all those people who live out there and go all out for the kids. I love that our neighborhoods are such nice places for the kids to go and participate. Some of y'all are scary. I stay away from your houses, but, but it's amazing. So thank you for doing that and everybody just be safe. There will be a lot of kids out and some of those streets are dark and traffic. So just be very careful. Have a great week.
Thank you. Happy birthday. Councilmember Cash.
Thank you, Mayor. First, thank, thank you to our city staff and all those that helped on last Saturday for the community event that we had. I really appreciate that. I want to also congratulate those tomorrow that are celebrating the Wally as in our community here. It's an amazing, amazing festival, amazing time. And this Saturday, we're having the classic pumpkin car, pumpkin patch, classic car show.
There you go.
On this Saturday.
Say that twice.
This Saturday at, on VD Mansion, where we have it there. And the last thing I wanted to mention and thank the police officers and the sergeant that responded a few days ago to a really, really tough scene. And I want to thank them for their professionalism. I want to thank them for their life-saving measures. I want to thank the Laverne Fire Department for just, I know you're doing your job. I get it. But sometimes even law enforcement for over 26 years, we've seen so much stuff that it's just hard to, hard to get past over a while and you remember it. So I want to thank those officers that were there to responded, did the life-saving measures and do whatever they could. So, and that's all I have, Mayor, and I want to thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. It is Andrea Blockinger's birthday today. I don't know where she is, but I think she's gone.
She went home.
She went home. I just want to go back to one of the things on the consent calendar was our legislative update. If you have a chance, please read it. It's all the different bills that Governor Newsom, he had till the 13th of this bunch, which they either signed or vetoed, but very extensive. We put a lot of opposition, opposition letters to a lot of these things. Takes a lot of staff time. Thank you, Mr. Domer. I think it's extremely important that we do this to give our residents to know what's going on, what affects our cities, what's good for our cities. And we do, we do communicate with many agencies to get those opposition letters out or the, the support letters to our higher elected. So it's very important. So if you get a chance to look at that. I want to thank also our staff for a number of the meetings we've had, whether it be the LBC III, our community forum or sewer and water rates. Thank you. We had three virtual, one in person last weekend. Takes a lot of staff time. Thank you, guys. Thank you. This is the most transparent city council and government and manager and different, of our different parts of the city that were extremely transparent. I really appreciate that. So if there are things to look at, you can always check anything on our website, but we have lots of great things going on. Also, our senior programs are incredible. Our Parks and Recreation Department has done a fantastic job. We pushing that out. There are so many things for seniors to do. It's incredible. All you have to do is sign up. All you have to do is be there. There's so many wonderful things that we do in our city. Also, I had a question from a resident today was the, when you drop off your ballots and those ballot retrieval boxes out in front of City Hall or any of the places, they do pick those up every single evening. So if anybody's asking that question and you're afraid that you're not going to get your ballots delivered when they're supposed to, as I understand, they pick them up every night and there are specific employees that work strictly for the, for that department. That's the county recorder. That's all they do and they sit out in that parking lot. They empty those things and they bring them to where they need to go every night. So just that there's any, any question. Other than that, everybody, please be careful on Halloween. Enjoy yourself, but slow down or leave your car. Ride a bike, pull a wagon, but just have a great Halloween. And with that, the next regular city council meeting will be on Monday, November 3rd at 5:30 PM. As a reminder, upcoming events are always in the meetings are posted on the last page of the city council agenda. And we are adjourned at 7:56 PM. Thank you all for being here.